Good evening, everyone. We are calling the Town of Great Barrington zoning board of appeals meeting to order on Tuesday, October 28 at 2025 at 6:31 PM. We have, for us, a full agenda this evening. Do we need to, let's have a roll call vote, a roll call, I mean, for attendance. Everybody is here?
Here.
Yeah.
All board members? All right. Then shall we open the public hearing on the special permit application regarding 23 Rossiter Street in Great Barrington?
Is there a motion for the chairman? And do you want me to follow where you did it?
Yes, please.
Steve, how do you vote? Open the hearing?
Yes.
Yes. Hi. My heart. Here.
Hi.
Your hearing's open.
Is the applicant ready to give a presentation?
It's Trevor.
Trevor's going to stand, won't just sit here. And I was gonna, I don't know.
Introduce.
Yeah, so Catherine Hurst was my name on the past on Trevor's, as I assume. There was a set that some of them, ours, and we had to present.
Can I pause you for one second? Is it possible for, for you to be closer to a microphone, do you think? Is there a microphone available or no?
Sorry, it's my voice, so I sound good. I need.
That's great.
All right. Do you want me to repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so my name's Catherine Hurst. I'm the wife of Trevor Hurst, who's on Zoom next to me is Vim Hurst, my third son. And we're here to present a new build for 23 Rossiter in Great Barrington in a zone that is non-conforming. And I would give it up to actually Trevor Hurst to start presenting, if you're okay with that.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, can't attend a person. I had recent surgery and am not in a position to be there, but I will just present online. I'm happy to turn off my camera or leave it on whatever works better.
Leave your camera on, it's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. Okay, that's the alarm for a meeting. Wonderful. Thank you for, for your time, for being here. We are looking at 23 Rossiter Street. We love the town center and are very excited to contribute to the town's living space and alive of it there. Application is for a pre-existing non-conforming lot. There is submitted documentation to prove the validity of pre-existing. We are applying for a special permit out of the Great Barrington zoning bylaws 5.2 and 5.3, where the new structures are no less detrimental, so the word to get the bylaws. And we're also applying under 5.7.2, rebuilding on the existing footprint. In preparation for this meeting and for planning purposes, we have met numerous times with Matt Colmar and Chris Rembold, and we also met with Peter Pacciano to receive guidance. Peter is unfortunately not able to make it tonight. We're looking at the District B2 and VCOD, the Village Center overlay district. And the town center guidelines of GB ask us to emphasize walkability, contributing to lively neighborhood, and we want to build these units for workforce, singles or couples, single parents or parents with one or two children. So the planned units would be two units of one-bedroom studios and two units with two-bedroom apartments. The existing structure is severely neglected. I'm sure you were able to get a good picture of that tonight. There is severe water damage and parts of the roof are caved in. It is not salvageable. We want to rebuild within the existing footprint. If you look at our application booklet, there's a few pages in a diagram with a green background that sort of shows the overall layout of what we're planning to do. And you can see the blue square that is the existing structure, and over that we laid a gray, gray blueprint of what we're planning to do for the first structure.
Can I, Trevor or Peter, do you want anything shared on screen? Just let me know.
Well, if you could share that pictogram with a green background, that'd be great.
Is that okay, Peter?
Yeah, certainly.
I think it's around page six or so. Yeah, there it is. This one with the green background. So that is the lot. The green, the green space is a lot, the yellow is the walkway. And you could see the blue space. The blue is the existing structure as it stands today. And we have overlaid the blueprint of the first structure over that blue to show you that we are within, well, within the footprint of the existing structure. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I called.
Okay. So as you can see, we are building within the existing footprint for the first structure. We refer to this building as Twin House A in our booklet, if you want to leaf through in our application booklet. And the floor area guidelines, which would allow us 25% over existing footprint, are not met. We're staying actually within the existing footprint. The proposed second structure that you see further down has two, two-bedroom units, and it meets all setback requirements as required in the bylaws. And we refer to this structure in our application booklet as Twin House B. We are well below the 75% lot coverage maximum overall. And we do have a new printout for this green pictogram because in our last meeting, someone requested one that only had feet as measurements. And we also had the proportions of the lot to be more precise, to reflect that it's not 100% perpendicular, but we do meet all setback requirements.
Yeah, you can make two calls.
But it's essentially the same. It was, there was some confusion that the red rigs show a walkway that is slightly different from this pictogram. And also, we made adjustments to show where we would place garbage disposal, et cetera.
I will need a copy.
Okay. The building height is just over 20 feet overall, which is well below the zoning's 40-foot roof midline allowance. In terms of design, if you leaf on further to some red rigs that we've provided, we have a very compact and modern floor plan and outside design. It adds to affordability, low utility usage. And we want to balance interaction and privacy with these, under, about these four units by providing open porches for every unit that are offset to opposite sides so that there is a certain amount of privacy, but also the ability to be communicative in the living situation. The red rigs show the neighboring structures in white volumes, just to show you how it fits in, how a proposal fits into the neighborhood. As for the, the building process, the units will be delivered in prefabricated modules, which will reduce the strain on the neighborhood with quick building timeline. Demolition is, will be done with a licensed contractor. We are already in touch. And we will make sure to protect neighbors and ensure proper waste disposal, of course. We plan to protect the site with a full chain link fence during demolition and construction to protect neighbors and children and also the building site. The second floor units have a second means of egress with the spiral-designed staircase to allow for proper egress. And the overall timeline, if all goes well, we would plan to demolish it early spring or before the new year, if at all possible, and prepare the grounds in spring, and construction could begin mid-May. And we expect completion about two months after that. The usage of the property, we're planning on creating four rental units. We had also played with the idea, some of our own use, maybe one of the units as we see changes in our family situation over the next few years. But it is a planned rental proposal. Yeah, I hope I was able to give you a good overview of the project. Thank you.
I, I think you gave a great overview of the project. There might be questions from the board. Why don't we start with James? Do you have some questions?
No.
Stephen?
No, it's very self-explanatory.
JB?
Just to set the record straight, there is a comment here that they have appeared before the Design Advisory Committee, which there was no action taken. It was just an introduction, I think. That was in May this past year. This year. And so that was just a, you know, an introduction. Hello, it was kind of a mistake, but that's just to make sure that the record shows that there was no decision, there was no action taken.
Can I just say something to it? So we filled out the form, the application form for the DIC, and I sent it to somebody called named Adam. Is that correct? So, and that was like, I had sent it in May, and I resend it now, like, two or three weeks ago.
And what was it else?
For, like, official application for the Board of Design, the one from we met the first time. So you have to fill out an application and hand it in. That's what his name, Building Inspector, first, yeah. No, Matt, Matt Collins. And told us to do. So I send that to Adam, just for you to know.
Madonna, do you have any questions?
It's an ambitious project, but yeah.
Michael?
I, I'm not sure this question is currently relevant. There's no provision for parking. Parking is on the street in that area, which is kind of crowded. This is I don't know, it's, I think, a great idea. That is one thing that the neighborhood of interest.
Yes.
Go ahead, Chuck.
We, we have considered this because it would also be in our interest to offer parking for possible tenants. Currently, the zoning doesn't require us to do parking, or if we do parking, it is asked to be at the back of the lot, which, given the pre-existing building, is impossible. We can't drive past the building. What we could do, we have looked into this, to put parking at the front of the street. However, it's very difficult to meet any sort of setbacks or to accommodate a parking space in the front yard of that property. If it's something that you would like us to look more in detail, we can. It's very tight. We do have a printout that we could show you, showing the dimensions of the minimum size of a parking space, according to the bylaws, and how that actually fits into that front yard. It's neither pretty nor very practical, but perhaps possible.
You want to see that? That's right here. So we have it.
And you have no room behind it?
No.
No.
No, we have.
Chris, while that, oh, while it's being passed out, can I ask you a question?
That will be the one right there. Wrong right there. So probably how to pass here, like to, I'm sure that this is a certain code. How much space you have to have in between.
Thank you. That was my big question.
My, my, I had had two questions. One was about parking, but it had to do with how does the town handle parking? I, I believe in the wintertime, there's no, is there a period of time when there's no off-street parking permitted?
Correct. The overnight hours from November through April, Thursday.
Right. So do, can, there's no rule, there's no requirement of parking here. But how do, how is this handled? Where you, you can't park on the street and somebody might have a car. Is there any, is there any facility for arranging off-street parking in that area?
That question to me is something the town.
Something I'm asking the board. Is that something that we ought to consider as a practical matter?
Or in the garden and the bank lot. The other bank. Or railroad, or railroad street lot.
Cars hardware.
There are a couple of areas in that, that corner of the town that look sufficiently off the street that you could get away with it.
And right behind them, for the summertime, you can park 24 hours on that street that's adjacent to the bank parking lot.
Yeah.
So you can park, behind you, behind this building is actually a parking, semi-parking lot. Have you talked to your neighbors?
And this is a very common for any of the renters that we have in apartments downtown or on Railroad Street. Somehow they figure out where to park.
Yep, they do.
Sometimes they don't have a car, but they usually find a, you know, a church or, or something, and they figure it out.
We, we did, we did consider moving the buildings on stilts and having parking underneath. But it doesn't seem very feasible. The lot is so small and compact that it just obliterates sort of the use and the garden space and the attractiveness of the lot, and is quite impractical from an engineering standpoint of how to do that. So we have given it a lot of thought, but we have found a viable solution for us.
And then.
I think they're going to figure out a parking thing. I think any, anybody who has a car is going to figure it out.
Let me get the aerial photo. I can see. They have a dozen places within 200 feet. Or you can probably sneak your cow in overnight in the wintertime.
Sneak.
Are there, are there any other questions from board members before we turn it over to the public? All right. Why don't we then invite any comments and questions from the public?
If you're online for this, you can raise your hand if you have a comment or a question.
Yeah, hearing none? Is there one?
I do see one.
Okay.
If you can just introduce yourself, your mic should be open.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is Christie Zia, and I own the property at 30 Elm Court, which is a, a barn which is going to be renovated, probably during the same time as you're going to be doing your work. And so I was curious to know, and actually, the parking is a question in my mind as well. And also, the, the whole of flow of traffic. Because Rossiter is one-way. And then if you want to get out of Rossiter, you have to swing around on a road that's barely maintained. Actually, I think it's partially private.
Sorry, Miss Zia. Rossiter Street is two-way.
Oh, is it two-way? I'm sorry. I thought it was one-way. Then, you know what? I'm not gonna. That was really my only concern. Also, just in terms of the look of the construction, the buildings themselves, they don't necessarily conform to the kind of look of the other houses on that street. Or did you want, did you address that at all in terms of just the look of it?
Is that question to us or to the?
Yes.
So I actually think it is a modern interpretation of what we have. We have open porches, which is something that neighboring buildings have. We have a metal roof, which I think is a modern modern design that incorporates the sort of top and the bottom apartment, similar to the round-wrapped porches where the roof's coming off. So the material change from the roof of the first floor, then over to the second floor, gives a little bit of an idea of the neighboring building having that wraparound porch that has a little roof on it, and then it's sort of the setback part of the building itself. So of course, it's different, but I think it's a very a nice sort of modern interpretation of that. And also, given the compactness of the lot, this sort of very straight-line design, I think will give it a much less impactful appearance to the street or to the neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Chris, I had meant to ask earlier, has this project been reviewed by any other boards?
All of them, as far as I know.
And Chris, and Chris, there have been no, everything's been positive?
The select board made a positive recommendation, as did the planning board. The Board of Health also heard it. Didn't make a recommendation, but did outline certain items that are, that would come up during demolition, including the hazard, hazardous material debauchment process, baiting and trapping for any rodents prior to demolition, hazardous material removal, health department inspection, dust controls, and those sorts of things. So they did note those items and, and passed it along to you without further comment. The Conservation Commission did not review, or between agents, I did review, there are no scenic mountains or areas of jurisdiction there for the thumb comb to have needed to acquire a permit from thumb comb. That's it.
Are there any other comments from anybody online or questions?
I don't see any.
Okay. Shall we move to board discussion? James, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's a great plan. And, you know, people have to deal with, I have to deal with parking too. I live on Railroad. That's just the way it is around here.
Stephen?
Yes, I think that the parking does have a lot of possible solutions. And I like the fact that the, the density is something that we need down in the village here because we do have housing issues, and this, this addresses a specific niche, which I think is, or niche, you know, which, which I think is an important one, too, which is people starting out. Need to start somewhere, and it's safe and nice and comfortable. So I'm I'm in favor of it.
JB?
No particular comment.
Madonna?
Although I was a little jarred by the modern look of, of what you, what you presented. But when you go down Rossiter Street, it doesn't seem like there's a vast number of historic, you know. So I think it'll be clean lines and
Sets the tone.
And, yeah, it sets the tone. Yeah. And I think that they're revitalizing an area because that house that's there now is not a historic district house by any means, you know. So I think you're going to improve a lot.
Michael?
Replacing one form of affordable housing with a much better form of affordable housing is moving in the right direction. They've gone to great lengths not to increase the non-conformity. That's the reason why they're here. I think it's an excellent project. I look forward to watching the summer. I try to bring those units around Rossiter.
My, my comments are that it's going to be a vast improvement over the existing property. I'm, I'm excited about the additional housing that'll be on the property. While I understand Madonna's point, I, I'm very much taken by this design and can't wait to see it in, in person. And I appreciate, appreciated that you weren't building to 100% of the coverage that you could have had at the property. So it doesn't seem to me like it's filling, you know, filling every last spot. As for parking, I'm always concerned about parking for, 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 you know. Although I appreciate this is a particularly good place to not need to have a car. You can walk around. There's a project that is going to be built down Main Street, where the developer has contracted with various entities to provide parking. That's a much larger building. But as everyone said on the, at the table, people seem to figure it out. So I don't think parking needs to drive any decision here. Those are my comments. Should we go to findings then?
If you may, if you don't need any more information, you could formally close the public hearing and then move along to your findings.
All right. Shall we close? All those in favor, someone want to move to close the public hearing?
You have a motion and a second. You take a roll call vote. You want me to call it?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Steve, how do you vote? Close the hearing?
Aye.
JB?
Yes.
Madonna?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Peter?
Hi.
There's a couple findings to, to make. You should, you should clearly state whether or not you find that it's pre-existing non-conforming, and move on to your finding under section five regarding the proposal being more detrimental to the neighborhood, and then move on to your special permit findings.
Right, so. So we're seeking, this is special permit under section five, so we need a determination that the change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. Do we take these issues in turn, Chris?
It would be good to state the findings clearly and determine.
I will make, see if I can improvise a motion here that's more or less coherent. If you'll be, if it's a pre-existing non-conforming use that the structure, that structure, I'm sorry, that the proposed changes in the structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That the adverse effects of the proposal will not alter the beneficial impacts on the town. In particular, that it will serve social, economic, and community needs by expanding available housing. It will not make a material change in the parking and loading situation that is already in place. Then it will not affect the adequacy of utilities. It will be consistent with the neighborhood character. It will have no immediate impact on the natural environment. And then by improving the quality of the town's housing stock, it will have a positive fiscal impact.
There a second here?
Second, I'm not.
But just a friendly addition, Michael and Madonna, if you're willing. Do you want to take a vote on just this specifically, or would you also like to add your, your vote on the permit itself? You know, and to move to.
Oh, I see, okay. And therefore, I move that we grant the special permit, the special permit be granted again.
Okay. You want to go ahead and take that up as a roll call, Peter?
Yes, please. Do you want to call it?
Sure. Steve, how do you vote on the findings and to grant the permit? JB?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing your home.
Wonderful. So do we. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you, Trevor, for doing this.
I'll get a little when it's done.
It will be exciting. Thank you.
Michael, did you do that from memory?
No, I used Chris's very helpful print, which he, by the way, circulated to the ZBA a while ago. That is very useful.
When everyone's settled, then, we should move to the next item, which is consideration of the special permit for 271 Monument Valley Road. Shall we take a vote to open the public hearing on that application?
Don't move.
Do you want these? So a second, sorry.
Second.
Is there a second?
Steve, to vote to open?
Yes.
JB?
Yes.
I'm fine.
Aye.
Your hearing is open. Your applicant is online on screen, your owner, and his representative is here.
Okay, good evening to you both. Who, who would like to start the presentation?
I will do the presentation. My name is Brian Bordonero. I'm the architect. Kurt, the owner, is joining us on Zoom tonight.
Hi, everybody. Kurt Brumey here. Thank you for the time.
We are requesting a special permit for the property at two seventy-one Monument Valley Road. There is an existing single family residence on the, on the property. It is a nonconforming structure because it doesn't meet the front yard setback. The zoning requires fifty feet from the street. And the existing house is approximately six, or yeah, sixteen feet or eighteen feet from the road right now. The existing structure where it is eighteen feet from the road is the oldest part of the house. From the Great Barrington property cards, it's listed as being built in eighteen twenty. And we have found several maps that show the building from eighteen seventy-six and nineteen oh four. There's also deeds of that era which match up the, the names on the map to the, to the deeds from that time. So the house is a nonconforming house, but it did, it was built before zoning. So we, it, it, we can consider it to be a legal nonconforming house. The work we're doing that we're requesting the special permit for is an expansion of the kitchen, which is on the north side of the building. We plan to extend a portion of the kitchen, which is approximately twenty-six feet from the front property line. We'll extend it north about thirteen feet and, and fill in a courtyard area. And the fifty-foot setback line is going to go right through that addition. So the addition itself will be nonconforming as well. We will not be increasing the nonconformance of the house, though. It will remain approximately twenty-six feet from the property line at, at that addition location. There are a few other parts of the house that we're renovating. They don't have any change to the existing footprint of the house. Everything will be done within the existing house structure.
Here, Bill, the garage?
The garage is a detached garage on the south side of the property that is completely conforming to the zoning bylaws and has been permitted already with the town.
A solid flag.
Yeah.
Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay, and Mr. Broom, did you want to add anything?
I think Brian covered it. Excited about the chance to put a kitchen we can all fit in with our family of four. It's an old school galley kitchen that we do a lot of hosting up there with family. And we've been in the property since twenty twenty-one. I went to Williams College up in the Berkshires, so that's how we found the area. And, you know, I've loved coming out there, spent about a third of our year out there on the weekends. So this is a chance to, I think, improve the property as we host with family members now that we've been up there for a few years and know how we use it.
Great. Are there questions from the board? Should we start with you, James?
Oh, I, I just, it, the property goes right over to Lover's Lane, right?
Correct.
And then it goes back.
It goes along Lover's Lane.
It goes pretty far.
Correct.
It's a big, how many acres is it?
It is
Three parcels, James. It's fifty-five acres in total.
Great.
So we, we, it was owned by John Stidzinski before, and we acquired the open land as well as the existing house on two seventy-one.
Cool. The particular parcel that this house is on is twenty-one point seven acres.
Stephen, do you have any questions?
No, it's clear to me.
JB?
No, I have no questions. It looks like a great addition. The maneuverability of the space and the outside area, it's really nice. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say that site visits are really important because once you're there and you see the old house, where all these old houses, I mean, really old houses from the eighteen hundreds, they're all right near the road. They weren't going to shovel, you know, way back.
Yeah.
They have, they just, they just went out.
The road was quieter then.
What? And the road was quieter? Yeah, that's a, that's kind of awful, but, but anyway, you can just see where the original house is. And, but the addition that they had for that galley kitchen is back. And that's what you're going to expand. It's a beautiful piece of property. Yeah. Lovely. Enviable gardens.
Michael?
Timing in on that, the nonconformity is what makes it charming.
Yes.
Advertisers, I am an old house.
Absolutely.
And it's up on a bluff there above the roads. The effect of the being close is mitigating it.
I have, I have no questions. Shall we invite any comments or questions from the public?
I'm just, I live on High Lover's Lane in Santos. After seeing what their plans are, I, and it sounds great. And I would like to commend the owner for all of the fantastic work that they've done up there on the property and everything for clearing it and making it look a hundred and ten percent more presentable than it's been in the past.
Is there anybody online, Chris?
Nobody has their hands raised.
Okay, should we then take a vote to close the public portion of this special permit consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Steve, it closed?
Aye.
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 Michael?
Aye.
Peter?
Peter, aye.
You're here, you're closed. Same findings. This is last, oh, I, I will know. The board reviewed and provided positive recommendations. Board of Health reviewed, did not pass on a recommendation. Conservation Commission did not review, but I reviewed it. They're near a wetland, but the work doesn't impact it. And the design professionals are aware of that proximity and possibilities. Meeting on Concom, just to say. Don't, don't worry, essentially.
We are presenting to Concom tomorrow evening. The, the meeting was supposed to be before this one, but it got switched afterwards.
Sorry, sorry, Peter, to forget to mention that.
That's all good. Any, who wants to open board discussion?
Nope.
So we need to give consideration to the section five and section ten requirements. And Michael denies that he has these memorized, but I, I think could go through those again.
Okay. I move that we, the board grants a special permit on my finding that this is indeed a preexisting nonconforming structure, legal preexisting nonconforming structure, dating from well before nineteen thirty-two, that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And that the adverse effects of the proposal will not outweigh beneficial impacts to the town. In particular, findings, one by one. The proposal creates no new nonconformity. It's within footprint of the existing nonconformity. And it creates no new parking issues, creates no other performance nonconformities. On considering the ten four two criterion, the social, economic community needs neutral. The use remains, the, the remains the same, traffic flow neutral remains the same. Advocacy of utilities, public services neutral remains the same. Neighborhood character remains the same. Impact to environment remains the same, may be improved if it's been cleaned up. Fiscal impact, neutral to positive, improving the place makes it more valuable and increases your taxes.
Shall we? Pardon me?
Is there a second? Steve, seconded. Shall I call her own?
Yes, please.
Steve, I find to grant special permit on those findings.
Oh, yes.
I love, JB?
Aye.
Aye.
Go.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
It's five zero unanimous to grant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Welcome. The next item on the agenda this evening is, is one that pertains to a special permit that we granted for the development of two thirty-two Main Street in May of twenty twenty-four. In connection with the, the packet this evening, we provided to the board the decision from May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, along with the applicant's applic, the application. Chris, is it possible for me to share my desktop?
Yes.
Do I just hit share and, or you giving me authority or?
You should be able to.
Okay. Hitting share. There we go. Hold on a second here. So are you seeing my desktop now, I gather?
Yeah, yes. Can't read.
Hold on a sec. So, okay. Let me see if, if you can see this. Can you, can you see what I'm, what I'm showing? All right.
Yeah.
So, well, I, I should say that Mike, Mike and I, there is no video. I, I thought there were videos of these hearings, but there's a transcript of the hearing that Michael and I have tried to decipher. And, and I say that because I'm going to move to this to show you in a second. So the, the transcript of this hearing, you, you can stare at it for a long time as if it's the Rosetta Stone and it's very hard to determine. But I've been through it and I know Michael's been through it. And the but I, I certainly others that were at that meeting should have their own recollection. But I'm going to describe for you the, the issue that Michael and I had, had thought was worthy of the, this board's consideration. At the May, and I know Madonna, you should remember this hearing as well because I believe you spoke on this point. At, at the May twenty-eighth hearing, there was discussion about the side yard between the Masonic Temple and the post office. And what we're showing you now is the current state at the what was presented to us in connection with the special permit application, among other things, it was this page which reflected stone pavers going from the, from Main Street, which is over here where my cursor is on the right, back towards the parking lot, which leads to Elm Street. At that May hearing, it was discussed that this, this path may be a, this path may be a path that has been used for some decades for, by people. And, and I know that it was used at least by me for some years to get from the, from Main Street to the back lot. And there was the suggestion that there could be a prescriptive easement, although this board doesn't deal in the legalities of prescriptive easements. That we deal in whether or not when we are approving a special permit, whether there needs to be conditions. And the, the ultimate, there was consideration of this path. And there was discussion with the applicant that the path would remain open. The, the, the decision, I'm, I'm going to pull up for you. Yeah, let me show you the, the, the final sentence of the decision, which is actually the decision. Not the findings, states, and I guess I'll highlight it here. It says, this approval is based solely on the plan submitted. Other structural alterations not reflected on the plan would require a further special permit from this board. And I can't speak for others. I can tell you that in connection with this decision, it was my understanding that that last sentence was meant to encompass the provision that i- if, if that path was to be obstructed, if the, if the owner of the property wanted to obstruct that path by building some new structure, he would return to the board. When the fence was first erected, I went to the building commissioner, Matt Colmer, to ask him about this fence and showed him the application and the decision. And I, I believe Mr. Colmer spoke with Chris. There is some conflict about this in, in the code. Because in, in some instances, in, in, in our bylaws, you do not need a permit to erect a six-foot fence. And, and so thi- this is a six-foot fence. So on the one hand, generally, if you want to erect a fence, you can. I'll point out that the fence that was erect, that the plans do show a fence, but they don't show it preventing egress and ingress from the property. The, the fence is along the perimeter. That is, that would cover the, what is there now, which is a wire fence that the post office has erected. There is a, a mass general law provision that suggests that a fence is a structure. So I, I can't tell you that this is crystal clear. But what I can tell you, at least from my understanding of the hearing that we attended and the decision that was drafted, was that the, the public would be permitted to walk from Main Street to Elm Street. I also understand from talking to Mr. Colmer that, and this may have come up in May twenty twenty-four. It's hard to find it in the transcript, but that the owner of the property is concerned that somebody could slip on the property. And so he does not want people walking. And, and that might well be a legitimate reason to permit him to erect a fence. That isn't before us today. What, what I, what I, what I wanted to discuss with the board and hear the board's feelings on and, and is, and then possibly take a vote, is whether or not we should refer this to the building commissioner for the building commissioner to give consideration on a more formal basis. The decision that was rendered by this board, the application that was made, consideration of the bylaw that says generally in our town, you can erect a six-foot fence. And to see if that bylaw is inconsistent with or consistent with this order. Also, the mass general law provision that says fences are structures. I don't need to share my screen anymore, Chris, so I guess I'm going to stop. But that's, that, that, that's the, I don't know how to stop it. Oh, there it goes. Stop share. Okay, so I, I think I've, I've tried to set the table for this discussion. And shall, shall we discuss?
I'd like to discuss what I believe the intent, and I believe the architect was there and the owner of the building was there. And I think it was the owner's intent to have that as a gravel walkway. I absolutely agree with that. That was his intention. But I believe the discussion also, if I recall correctly, Peter, you were all for like putting in a, a certain wording that he couldn't change anything. And I was against that because I felt that, you know, if all it would take to mess everything up is to have bad, you know, bad actors going through that thing. uh, bad, you know, uh, bad actors going through that thing and deciding they were going to sleep out there or do drugs there, or what, whatever, you know? And, and I really felt that if he needed to close that off and, and not make that extra gravel, that was fine with me. And I, I think the fence is a little jarring, cause it's so new and it's so brown and it's, it's there. Um, I wonder if it's sort of like a barricade fence and, and that kinda looks a little strange to me. But I think his intent was right, unless he was fibbing to us, unless he was lying to us, but I don't, I don't think that. Uh, because the ground, uh, he still has that coffee place there, he's still inviting the public onto that front land. Um, and I, I personally, I think, uh, you know, I, I, the, the fence is kinda jarring and it's so big and it really does wall off. But I can see a liability issue that he doesn't want people walking by there. And if we can remember, there were, there were even doors and stuff on that side, wasn't there? I mean, um,
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there was a door. I, 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 I think he, he wants the protection and he did it. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not offended by it. It's a little jarring, cause it's so big and so brown and so new. Um, but I, I, I think he has the right to do it and, you know, I, I, the fact that he did it, people can still go through the, um, the Berkshire Bank parking lot and get to the, the, uh, Elm Street.
Anybody else?
Um,
Yes.
Do we go down the table? I, I can't see, I apol- and I, I, I see you now, there you go. Steven.
They're totally invisible, but. That's a shelter, might of Zelba. Um, one of them is, uh, what, what be, why did the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer not? We, did he refer it to us?
No, um, may, may I answer that? So I, I, uh, I go to the post office every day, I don't have mail at my house. And, uh, I, 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 they don't deliver it there. And I, I saw the fence probably, prob- probably the first day it was put up. And, um, it, it, it bothered me because, um, the discussion at the, um, May twenty twenty-four hearing, uh, you know, wa- had been important to me and Madonna and I, uh, had our, had our points. Um, I, I went to the Bill, I went to the Building Commissioner meet, well, well, no, that's, I called Michael to say, what is the process here? Because, uh, as Chair, I'm smart enough to know you should always get everything you can from the Vice Chair. And, uh, uh, Mi- Michael said, well, you, why don't you go talk to the Building Commissioner about it? Um, so, uh, a- a- and, and I did, and, and, and the discussion was as follows, um, that I was offended, that I thought that this was a, um, uh, a violation of the order and, 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 um, and, and di- and, and asked him to look into it. And, um, he said he would, and then I provided to him by email the, the relevant documents and sent him the picture. Um, uh, but he didn't bring it to us and, and, um, I, I, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but there was more than a couple of conversations with him or emails with him, where he said that he's not comfortable because he, he doesn't know, uh, a sen- a- a- again, you, you, we should have him here, but I think he was saying, on the one hand, you can erect a fence in Great Barrington that is six feet without a special permit. He also recognizes that we have a decision that says no other structures. And he acknowledged that I showed him that under Massachusetts general law, a fence can be a structure. So he, he said, um, uh, w- when I suggested to him that we would, a- and in consultation with Chris, put this on an agenda, and Michael put this on an agenda for discussion, he said he would be more comfortable if it came to him from the board.
I see, yeah, I just wondered, because if, if he decides they don't need it, there's really nothing we can do, am I correct?
Well, so I,
You go to the board and you go to the board.
I, I bel- I believe, I believe the process, Stephen, cause I, I researched this and maybe Chris will correct me if he thinks I've gotten it wrong, or anybody can correct me if I've gotten it wrong. Um, I believe the board has the authority to refer it to him for consideration. If he doesn't act within a certain time by, by, um, putting out an enforcement order to remove the fence, it then comes back to the board and the board could then take a, a vote to instruct the Building Commissioner to issue a enforcement order.
Okay, all right, well, the other, the other thing that, um, I guess that the, the last sentence of the decision, um, the meaning is really determined by whether it's a structure or not, you know, whether we can consider that. It, and I don't, I don't believe it would be in the building code either, you know, so there's, it, because it's no higher than six feet.
What bothers you about this, Peter? I mean, honestly, cause it seems like you're trying to do this in a twist.
Yeah, a little bit, um, you, you, you,
It's like a technical term.
You, no, I think you, I think you nailed it. Um, it bothers me because it was, um, we were very forthright at that hearing, uh, with the applicant, um, about a- about that path. And he's, he told us about the path and that he, he even said that he didn't intend to, to do anything without coming back to the board. Um, and I think, so I think, um, it's a question of, uh, the legitimacy of this board, that if we go to the trouble of having a discussion, having somebody make a representation to us, um, cr- writing a decision that we believe encompasses that discussion and then somebody ignores it, it, it distur- tha- that disturbs me. Um, I, I, I also, I mean, I don't like the look of the fence, but I'm not a designer and, and that's not the issue at all. Um, but I, I really felt like we left, we, we had a handshake agreement kinda thing, where he looked us in the eye and said, I'm not gonna do anything else without coming back to you. And then he put up the fence. And so I got myself twisted here about it.
Did you, did you, did you a- actually talk to the, the owner? And, and you did, right?
I, I have not, no, no, the only time I've ever spoken to the owner was at the meeting. I, I don't feel it's my place. Um, I'm one member of five on this board, I'm not going up to the on- I'm trying to do this, we're trying to do this the right way. I think the right way is to talk to the Building Commissioner. Um, he doesn't know quite what to do. Then, um, we referred it back to the board for the board's consideration. If, if three people on this board say, you know, if he wants a fence, he can have a fence, then that's it. Um, if three people on this board say, you know what, we'd like the Building Commissioner to look at this, we respect, Peter, that you feel that he didn't, um, abide by your order, uh, the order of the board. Um, you know, so it's up to the board, it's not a, this is not a Peter Most thing, this is a board thing.
I am also concerned about vindicating our process here, defending your decision. I don't feel very strongly about the particular fence, however, um, is concerned about the impossible nuisance of having the pathway, pathway there. Hmm, okay, up to a point. What he's actually put in is gonna be a worse nuisance, because it's not close to both sides and somebody could hide that.
Are they locked?
Um, if.
I think. They kept locked.
Who knows? Who knows what people might do like?
Do you think we, as a board, should write to him?
So.
And ask them? I mean, with,
I think there's a, I think there's a process, Madonna, which is, the process is the Building Commissioner has responsibility for talking to uh, homeowners with respect to, uh, structures on their property and, or not. And, but it's, the, the Building Commissioner actually reports to us, we have administration of the Building Commissioner. So the Building Commissioner should, should be our agent in this regard. Um, we, 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 and, and that's the, that's my, I, I mean, I was, I did some research on this, I, I'm not telling you I'm perfect, but I'm telling you this is my understanding.
I'm in favor of taking an action to refer to the Building Inspector to put this thing on the record for him. Uh, I would not be surprised if at the end of the process, we say he can keep the fence.
I agree. Yeah, I think the process is, the, the concern that I have, because precedent is always a, a worry for a board like this, that if you let one person do it, others will come back and say, you let so-and-so do it, why not me? And so it, it seemed, I just took a look, it may well be that it is a structure in the building code. And just because it doesn't need a permit, the decision said, structure, you know, and, and that could be things that don't need building permits. It could be a, uh, you know, shed of a hundred and forty square feet or whatever the number is. And, and it wouldn't need a building permit, but we still would not want it in violation of what was approved as site plan.
Right, so, um, I, I don't wanna, uh, cut off the discussion. Is there any more discussion about this or should we make?
It sounds like it's vague, is, is it a vague structure or is it a structure? Is it part of the building? It's a part of the real property, I don't know. I, I'm, that's what I,
Um, i- 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 I, I am cons- the, this, the last sentence, I believe, encompassed the discussion of the meeting, uh, which was that the, that, that the, that he would return to the board in the event that he was going to erect i- anything. And we had discussed that that was a walking pathway that people then currently use. Um, now, a clever lawyer would say, but you didn't say break fence or what have you. And I, but I, I don't, but we, we're also, uh, you know, a town board that doesn't try to over-lawyer things. Uh, not that there's anything wrong with that, by the way. Um, but, but, um, but I think that last sentence really encompassed and, and was a bit of a compromise, because as Madonna mentioned, I had wanted as a, a condition of the special permit that there be nothing there. And Madonna said, no, 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 that's too much. And ultimately, M- Madonna won the day on that and we ended up just having, if you, you need to come back. No, no, I know, I know, I know. Now, you, 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 you were, you, you won the day and, uh, you convinced me too, no, but this was, so this sentence was a compromise, where we said he agreed he'd come back to, he, before he did something else.
I was kinda surprised when I saw it, that they didn't have a fence. Uh, you know, that's what I recall that, cause it, they weren't gonna book one, and I thought, well, that's odd. And I guess my sense of it is, if they came back for a special permit, I would probably, I'd be inclined to, you know, uh, issue it.
I, I think I might be as well, but that, but, but the, so you, but I don't think, I think it's worth doing this the right way. And I do think it has something to do with our institution, this board and respect for this board.
I do, I hate to say it, because I don't like to throw, you know, things in people's paths, but I do worry that if we bend for this person, we have to bend for the next person, you know, and that's not fair. You know, it becomes unfair, the guy that, the person that, that loses ground and when somebody else gains it, you know? And we have to be miserable. I'm just wondering if the owner thought that the fence was a structure versus, he didn't think it was a structure, it, it, you know?
Um, James, I, none of us are in a position to try to get into the, the mind of the owner and, but I, I do know what the discussion was and I do know, I, 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 the, um, of any of the board meetings that I've attended, that was the one that sticks in my mind the most, because it was, it was a real discussion a- about this one point.
Um, i- if I may say something, Peter, uh, I agree with you. Um, but in my memory, I'm not sure if it's a conversation that came from the Design Advisory Committee or this board, but I remember very distinctly asking the owner about that, um, uh, path, really. Uh, in the pa- plans that I was looking at, there was a gravel path that went all the way over. And I asked him if he really intended that to be for the public. And he said, no, he didn't want the liability of people coming through there. There was no need for people to go through there, because they could go through the, the bank parking lot, it wasn't out of, out of the way. So anyway, I just wanna throw that in.
You, are you, I, I, I guess I learned today, JB, that you're on the Design Advisory Committee as well? Um, is, is putting up a fence in a downtown historic area without going to the Design Advisory Committee something that one is permitted to do? As far, I, I, I don't know much about design.
Yeah, I, I don't know frankly, um, because it's been our, um, purview has been kind of rocky. What we do now really is approve, um, signs, retail signs, um, various things like that. Uh, so I don't know about fences.
And, and Chris, is this something that the Historical Commission would do, given the, the age of these buildings, I presume, aren't so old that the Historic Commission considers it?
Uh, no, so, i- if I could make a few points and answer a few questions. The Historical Commission has no jurisdiction over the structure or any other structure. Um, the Historic District Commission has certain authority over certain structures that are designated in the town bylaw. Um, but whether or not your builder, building is old is not determined to whether or not the Historic District Commission has any say in it.
That's what I mean, by the way.
Specifically listed, um, uh, and any, anything that changes that goes to the, to the HTC. The Historical Commission does not, that's, that's one thing. Whoever it is, it does not require review. Um, this building is not listed in, in either place. In terms of the DAC, no, it wouldn't trigger a DAC, Design Advisory Committee review either. And that has to do with why neither the Building Commissioner nor probably, I can't get it to the mind of the owner or the builder there, uh, why, uh, there wasn't a permit of five floor for like a building permit? Because a building permit is not required for a fence of six feet or less. So the, the owner presumably thought, because a building permit's not required. And also, it's worth noting, at least two sections of said fence or some sort of thing are, are noted on your plans, not the full enclosure that we built, but something was noted. So if I were the owner slash builder, um, and there was a something on the plans and I didn't need a permit anyway, that you might just put it up, because you have possibly liability concerns or other, other things. So I can see how it would happen without scrutiny, um, until Peter went positive.
Could I make a suggestion?
And so, uh, and I'll just finish, um, since, since it wouldn't have needed a build, an inspect, a building permit, and the fence wouldn't need a building permit, then obviously the Building Inspector wouldn't see it and wouldn't have said, oh, this is a structural alteration that needs the ZDA to see it. So it, it never, uh, it never roads to that.
What you just described is, is an out for this board, in, in the sense that, uh, it's not a structure. So, you know, the,
It's a structure in, it's a structure in the, in the zoning bylaw just per definition, but it is not something that needs
A permit.
A permit, and so it never would have been flagged for as needing to come back to this board.
I mean, fences are odd, because you can have your fence that's a foot high and that's a fence.
When Peter first asked me about it, or maybe it was Matt, the Building Inspector, said, there's fence there, that's not on the plan. I said, no, it is on the plan. The whole thing, but the whole thing is not on, right?
Well, I'm just looking for, you know, if there's people on the board that feel that it's okay to have that fence there in and of itself, not because of anything procedural, then it seems to me that we have a way, if anyone else were to question that, that, that we can explain why it didn't require, um, coming back again, because it didn't require a building permit.
Just to be a devil's advocate, and if the zoning board, uh, says, hey, Building Inspector, we want you to, to do zoning enforcement on this and you, we want the, the owner to have to come file for a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
And they did, and that's great. What if the zoning board did not grant a special permit for the fences existing there and the owner has liability concerns? I, I don't know what that endgame looks like, but it's probably not something that you would want to push the envelope on. Um, I can presume there may be an outcome to this process that everybody lives with, but it is a process that is, um, not, you know, necessarily controlled.
Um, so I don't disagree with many of Chris's comments, but, uh, the, I, I believe, based on the discussion that we had with the applicant at the time and, and the agreement that we reached with the applicant at the time and the decision that was rendered unanimously in this, in that, on that special permit, um, that takes priority over the issue of if generally you can erect a fence in Great Barrington. So parties can agree to any number of things. I can agree with somebody else that there's only six days in a week. Um, that may be inconsistent with, with the Julianian, Gregorian, or any other calendars or what have you, but you can agree to that. I, I believe we came to an agreement with him that he would agree to return to the board. And given, i- if there had been no discussion with the applicant whatsoever about And given i- if there had been no discussion with the applicant whatsoever about the pathway. The the paving stones, a a fence, uh if Madonna and I hadn't hit the ball back and forth over the net a few times about this point. We would not be having this discussion because uh just generally you have the right to erect a fence. It happens in this one particular instance, we had an applicant who looked us in the eye and said, if I'm going to be adding another structure. And I have to remind everybody, a fence is a structure under Massachusetts law. It says, if you erect a structure, he would, no other structure would would be erected absent returning to the board. So I I generally, Chris is absolutely right. You can put up a fence, but that's not where we are on this decision.
Well, where do we want to go?
Well, doesn't it end up at the same place? It's, I mean, aren't we gonna end up at the same place?
But if we do it, if we do, James, we've respected the process and.
Yeah, no, yes.
Why can't we write him a letter or have the um building inspector write him a letter, not drop the hammer? Because it seems like, well, I mean, it it just seems we're dropping the hammer. I mean, can't we have a discussion about it first and find out? Maybe there's a good reason why he decided to put that fence up, that we don't even know. And I mean, and and then we don't need.
That's that's what we're inviting him to do. We're inviting him. We we just want to ultimately, um it's ultimately. It seems when we go down this road, we get to invite the property owner to to his E B A meeting. Where he explains why he put up the fence. Based on the comments I've heard, it wouldn't surprise me if he was, he's going to get that fence. Um but I and and he he's without prejudice to come at any time, but he hasn't done that. Um but I do, I I just think that um it's a concern for the institution. It's a concern for the decision that was rendered.
What's before us right now is the opportunity to send the invitation to refer this back to the building inspector. Uh the question being, does this fence comport with the with the decision of the board?
Right.
And he will hide on that. He will say yes or no. And then we create an opportunity for it to come back to us possibly.
Right. Um I would like to make a motion.
Uh it seems like you would also uh attempt to say. Definitely whether you want it to come back. Is there's Michael's option, which is, building inspector, please determine if it should come back. And there's another option to say, bring it back. I'm sorry, Peter.
Could I, Chris, I I didn't quite, could you make that point again for me?
Michael was was uh saying the question here is to send it back to the building inspector to make a determination if it should come back to the zoning board.
Or to whether the fence comports with the with the special permit. And he can say yes or no. And depending upon which way he goes, it might or might not come back to us.
Or I I guess the point I was trying to make was, do you want it to come back regardless? So in other words, do you make that decision now?
Based on my discussion.
I don't think Peter's gonna sleep until he discusses this out.
Sorry, Peter, so you can accept a motion uh or invite a motion if you.
I mean, the motion that I would like to make is to instruct the building commission, the the building commissioner. To um enforce the decision. Then, the building commissioner, as I understand it, is unlikely to enforce the decision because there's, in his mind, there's some ambiguity. At that point, when he he doesn't enforce the decision within thirty days of our ordering him to do so. This board then would would convene to um order the building inspector. To write an enforcement order. At that point, the property owner would come to the board and say, I have. Uh erected a fence, let me tell you why. And then we could bless that event if we wanted to.
I mean philosophically, I have one thing, is that we're gonna end up right here again. And it's just like, everybody complains, it takes me a year and a half to get a permit. It gets, you know, I have to go back again. You know, and I just think that philosophically, we're gonna end up at this exact same place. And this whole fence as a structure is very wishy washy with me. I it does. I don't know. I mean, if you saw a metal fence there, I don't think you'd say it's a structure. I mean, it looks like a structure, but it's all wood that can never do that bad. But if it was just like a chicken wire fence, I don't think anyone would pay attention. So again, I think just, I'm just expressing an opinion and it's my own philosophy. That shit takes too long to get approved. And if you can move it along faster, you're gonna have a a community that likes you more.
Well, on the other hand, if we did nothing at all, people would love us, you know, we'd rather get. You know, it it just seems that uh. I mean, the process is a concern. It really is. Because, Peter, you said basically, if you look you in the eye and said, we won't do anything without coming back, and they did something. And and it's so it goes beyond whether a permit's required or not, you know, it's something that's more of the nature of zoning than than. You know, or or agreement. For the special permit than it does whatever requires a permit or not, because there are a lot of things you could do that don't require a building permit. That did would not go along with that. They would put up a bunch of sheds, they could. As long as each one was not big enough to require a building permit, as long as they were within the setback. That's not, it doesn't take a building permit.
Peter, you've put a motion on the table.
Okay, I this, let me, my my motion is to refer this matter. Of the decision nine four four dash two four to the building commissioner. To enforce the Z B A's May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four decision. Concerning the fence that was erected between the Mason, the former Masonic temple and the post office. Um uh vice chair, do you want to make that motion sound a little better?
Oh, it sounds okay. Uh I'll make the motion.
Please.
It's a little hard, a little more forthright than I would have made, but I'll make the motion.
Okay.
So.
Is there a second? All right.
There is.
Uh that uh you want to do, let's do a roll call. Uh Steve?
What are we roll calling?
Wh- whether we're, we're doing a, we're doing a vote.
Building inspector. For enforcement.
Yes, I'm.
JB?
I'm a no. I'm a nay.
Okay, Madonna, nay. JB? Michael?
I footnote, our by law says that a fence over six feet is a structure. It does not say a fence is a structure. However, I'm still voting for it.
Okay. And and Peter is, Pi- Peter is I, so I I believe uh it's four one. I I believe that carries. Um Chris, what is the um documentation uh required for this vote?
Uh well, I guess I could reduce this to a letter. Uh which you can sign or if you're not in in town, you can.
No, I'll I'll be, I'll be back tomorrow.
Okay, well, I won't have it ready tomorrow.
I know, I think, that's fine. I'll 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 be there. What time can I get there?
I I think I think there'd just be a letter to the the building inspector.
Okay, let's let's do that. And then um. Uh then the the next item on our agenda this evening is to prove the minutes of October seven, twenty twenty five.
Just one second, Peter.
Sure.
If I had any changes, I'd watch them.
Did did um, I'm just trying to recollect. Did I actually send these?
What, the minutes?
Minutes.
I I I was going to ask, I as- I assumed that somebody got them, but not me.
Well, we we have three chances at this, so if we don't want to do it tonight, we can do it at our next meeting, whenever that is.
But let's 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 do that. It'll be at least thirty days from now.
We got another one hanging up?
Yeah, I I didn't, yeah, I didn't have those prepared.
Oh, okay.
Chris, do we do news speak first or citizen speak?
Uh you would just have citizen's feed on your agenda. This board usually doesn't do a news uh immediate time.
Um uh is there any, are there any citizens uh that care to speak?
I got Claudia. Claudia, do you need this?
Uh nobody.
And there's no one online?
No.
Um, all right.
We're not interested.
Uh I Eileen's not even here? I thought she attended.
She's not interested.
Um, all right, then uh hearing no citizens wanting to speak. And here, having no other business before this board, uh absent any objection, we shall adjourn.